Yeah.
Great. Welcome, everybody, which I think means Pam and April.
Hi.
Bill. That's it. Now, where do you guys see the?
You go up to participants at the bottom.
Participants, okay, I see five.
It opens a window on the right, and Janet is here. We need to let Janet in.
Oh, okay. I didn't see Janet.
There's five of us right now.
Right, okay. That's up there.
Janet.
Janet in, there we go.
Janet, Janet.
All right, so that's, we are the five.
Thank you.
Janet. I don't even see, so where is the, so if I go to participants and I click on it, will it?
Yep.
It doesn't, oh, there it is.
It should open a window on your right.
Right, so it's got panelists, and then it's got attendees, which would be guests, non invited, uninvited guests.
That is correct, or invited. Anyone can join there. We've had like four or five at different meetings, but today we have zero.
We have zero, okay. So we don't have a quorum, so we can't approve any minutes yet. So I'm just gonna start by, let's see. I don't know if Cindy's coming, I don't know if. Who else? I mean, Marius, they might be late. So let me just count how many members we have, just to make sure. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Do you want me to text Mary, Isaac?
I guess we have, yeah, why, you go ahead. Hmm. How come I only come up with seven people on our, in our group? Is that right? Richard and Ralph aren't here. Oh, Mel. Mel makes eight, okay. Right, so we need five, I think, right? We need a plurality for a quorum. Is that how it works? Pretty sure.
I'm not sure with the number, how the number works, if it's.
Yeah, yeah, if you have an even number, then it's, you're kind of screwed, because you can't do like half, you need more than half. So, yeah, see if Mary and Mary and Marius.
I just texted her, let's see if she writes back. If they're just wrapping that other thing up, she's probably gonna jump on, but she might need a quick.
What do they, what do they wrap, oh, yeah, so she, oh, they're on with, on watching the George's budget hearings, or is?
Oh, it was budget, George was part of it, there was bigger agenda.
This isn't on our agenda, actually, I haven't looked at it, since you just sent it out. But I don't know the accuracy of this, but if this is accurate, I would love for us to take, kind of take a stance on it, that if you're not aware, the Board of Ed and students are having trouble parking up by Trumbull High, so they're parking on some backroads, they're parking in random places, and causing some trash, and some conflicts with some neighbors. But from what I'm hearing, from people who live up in that area, is that they flagged some trees already in the wetlands as a possible asking the state to remove the trees to create a larger parking lot in the wetland area over there.
Really?
And I think that stands against everything that we stand for as a group, which is, they're saying, take down more trees, because we need a parking lot.
Yeah, sounds like a strong.
The opposite of what we stand for, so when I find out some truth, I already reached out to Mary and Mel. So they're, they've asked a couple of people out, and we're just waiting for information to come back. But after, I guess, going to the seedling event I did in Fairfield, you know, I'm all about peacefully, you know, hugging a tree.
Sure.
Well, you know, in my day, okay, this is a long time ago, and I don't want to sound flippant about it, but there were X amount of permits for students.
Yep.
And if you didn't get your name in in time, or, you know, you just didn't get a permit, so you had to take the bus or walk, or get a ride.
So they're parking forhood versus doing that.
What's that?
They're parking in residential area instead of doing that, and it's not even like they're, from what I'm hearing, because again, I don't live there, is that not only are they parking in the residential area around Trumbull High, but that they're leaving garbage out there, they're parking in front of people's mailboxes, they're parking in front of garbage cans, not exactly making like, hi, I'm just gonna park here, and like, not, you know, so there seems to be a little bit of a conflict going on between the residents there and the students themselves.
There should be enough parking zone, that's all there is to it, you know?
Yeah.
Mary, since she's still on the budget meeting, by the way, there's Mari.
All right, one, one more, and we're a quorum.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you, Pam, I'm just stating that, as far as I know, already flagged trees.
No, I know, and I saw the answer that Mel gave you, and if it's going to be on wetlands, it's gonna have to go to inland wetlands, like, it's gonna have to go through a process before it gets approved. So we can.
I do agree with the process, but I think, let's think historically, over the last couple of years, anything that was potentially close to inlands or wetlands, got approved anyway, and it was, you know, there's been consequences since then from those areas.
I mean, that would have to go through inland wetlands, and I don't know, would Conservation Commission have some say on that, Pam, you know, right?
Probably.
I would think.
As would residents have, be able to attend the hearing that's.
Right, that would be a whole process if they were to do that, so presumably, that's not gonna happen tomorrow or anytime soon. Keep it on the radar?
Yeah, I think we should just keep it on the radar, and I would love for the, you know, for us to stand on that.
Does that property belong, who, to whom does that property belong? Do you know, is it school property, is it town property apart from school, what, do you know the jurisdiction for that?
It may be Board of Ed property, but it's also wetlands, Janet.
Right, right, and like you said, theoretically, everything has to go through the commission in order to do that. Just so that you know, I just read that the, I don't know if you were following the issue with the two West Misha Road properties that had applications denied, and apparently that is in appeal right now, as per the last IWWC minutes. So, a resolution has apparently not, is, is being challenged, just so you know, Pam.
Inland wetlands denied it flat out, right? The last time?
Yes, right.
They came back and they're appealing, but I don't think, I don't see how they're gonna get that through, it was so onerous, it's so bad.
I know, well, we'll see what happens. I, I don't know what it means when it's, you know, when the attorney says the situation is being appealed, I'm gonna give them a call. Sorry, I digress.
Okay, so Marie Strollin is now an attendee, she's here.
Welcome, Marie. Let's see, we need one more for a quorum, so maybe, what'd you say about Mary, Pam?
You just texted back and said she's still on the budget meeting. Bill, do you know if that's wrapping up?
It just ended. But I thought she said, well, I thought Cheryl said she had a field trip kids thing to do outside.
Yeah, there's some, there's something happening at the Nature Center, does that, that wouldn't have anything to do with, do they all finish it up with the Nature Center?
The whole meeting is finished, sorry.
It's all done, yeah, that shouldn't take long, okay. All right, so hopefully, Mary is hopping on soon, and then we'll have a quorum. Meanwhile, if we want, we can talk about, wait a minute. Nope, never mind. So before we do any thing else, we can, anybody need to leave early?
I'm always happy to leave early, but do you want me to show you the brochure, the draft of the brochure?
April says yes, sorry. April, does that mean you have to leave early? Because you're cooking? Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, Karen, go ahead.
Do you guys want me to show you the, the draft of the brochure for the Thousand Trees for Trumbull?
Yeah.
Let me bring it up, and I'll share my screen.
Sure.
Out a little bit here. Okay, so I'm going to rid of this, and I'm gonna come back and share my screen. Okay, so this is a PDF of a brochure that's been through a number of different iterations and drafts. It's a tri-fold brochure, so it folds over. No, I have one here, so for those who are not in with the lingo, it's, uh, does this, can you see it in my hands?
Uh huh, very nice.
So, and it, so this is the one side, this is the first page, and then it opens up into this, and it explains to any resident who wants to know the who, what, when, where, and how for the first year of the Thousand Trees for Trumbull program. It even shows a little map of the first plantings planned for end of March, beginning of April, at Quinn Brooks Park. The brochure talks about, you know, why, why replace trees, the reasons to do it, what the benefits are, our other plans for Twin Brooks, including a pollinator pathway garden, deer too. This little graphic here for the Arbor Day Foundation on the bottom left, talks about the right tree in the right place, so, as I saw someone say, you know, they're cutting them down for a reason, why plant more? Well, there's a reason you have to plant the right tree if you're gonna do it with your power lines. And then the back here talks about the basics of how it's being funded without too many specifics. We have our own website on the town's site, and then we have our own email address, if people want to email us questions, à la what we do with sustainable Trumbull. So, we're gonna have one more round of people have a look at it from the Conservation Commission, and we're waiting for George Estrada to just confirm one thing that's in here, and we'll go to press. We're going to print some, and we're gonna make it available online for others to review. So we're not, we're gonna put some on recycled paper, we're not gonna do too many, it was, we had considered mailing it to all the residents of Trumbull, all the households, it was over 12,000 households, it was gonna cost us some exorbitant amount to mail it. We might still try to get in the tax bill if there's room, but we're still debating that as well, so more to come on that. Any questions?
Yeah, so you say it's, is this year one, then, we're about to start planting?
Yep, it's planned. The trees have been earmarked for purchase, we have partnered with the town of Greenwich on their provider for trees, so we're getting a really good price on native trees that are going in, it's probably about 50 trees for the spring.
Sorry, how many was it?
Five oh, 50.
Fifty trees, okay.
And then with the funding that, excuse me, my dog is bringing me a bone, I don't want it right. With the funding that we're gonna have, hopefully for year two, we're hoping to do a fall planting as well at Twin Brooks, all on that, around that main lawn area, which is kind of just grass now, and goose.
So the planning is, the planning is planned, sorry, planting planned for April? Sometime in April?
End of March, beginning of April. It's Lucy Cusey right now, because, you know, they're still working in Twin Brooks, but that's the idea.
End of March is coming up real soon, is the.
Yeah, and it is. Mary? Hi, Mary, Mary's here.
Hello, yes, I, I needed to take a 10-minute quickie from Zoom, my eye, I'm in a bad spot, my eye is killing me from the sun. Where, how many are you gonna print, and where are they gonna go? Are these to mail out at all, or to put, like, say, at the library, or senior center?
Yeah, we're gonna make some available in public places like Town Hall, and, and suggestions are welcome for where, we haven't given a quantity yet, we have pricing. We have very, very nice pricing from John Masari, who's on Conservation Commission and has a print shop. So, we're gonna use him. We hadn't planned on mailing out to all residents, because it was prohibitive unless there's a way to sneak it in the tax bill, but that's not until July.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big sneak. It's like, it's already, it's at that, that level already. And then the last thing, I'd sent to Mel for the pollinator area, is that where you drive in after you hit Liz's Bridge to the right there, or was it up at the Veteran?
The non-veterans.
Veteran, okay. Let's check in. It looks fantastic, thank you guys so much for all the work.
Yeah, it looks good.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So it's 50 trees, are they all in Twin Brooks, did you say, or something up by the Town Hall? What'd you say about the Town Hall? I missed that.
I didn't say anything about Town Hall, these are the trees, just that we'll make some brochures available there.
Okay, yeah.
Year one, the plan is to put the trees at Twin Brooks. There's, as you know, over the last 12 months or more, there's been a lot of work done at Twin Brooks, and either from nature or just whatever, there's, there are few, very few trees on that main lawn, so we're gonna really try and make that kind of an arboretum.
Pam, are we referring to, and I didn't see quickly in the brochure, but does it say Twin Brooks Park? Because I've seen Trin Brooks a few times, but at least once we need to write Twin Brooks Park, I think, and my other question.
Hold on one second, let me just.
Yeah.
Back. Uh, where to go? Here. So here, year one at Twin Brooks Park.
There you go.
Oh, okay.
Page.
Got it, got it, okay.
Because I think if it says Twin Brooks anywhere else, it will say Twin Brooks Park, but I'll double check to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, there it is, under the basics, right at the bottom. At Twin Brooks, where we'll be planting.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you.
And my other question is, we, our community has someone who does, has a printing business, and I don't know if it's, if it's appropriate or not, or if it's okay to ask him if he would be willing to print some of these, or is that sort of, you know, not, not, not formal enough for this kind of.
Did you ask him for a quote?
Well, or a quote, or, or not, yeah, let's start with that, because he does, he does a lot of printing for us for nothing. And for this, maybe he can offer a quote, yeah, if you could give me a, a copy of this, and then I'll try and get hold of him and see, and see what he, what he says.
Okay.
The other thing is, I mean, I, I'm hearing that it's very expensive, however, considering the number of infractions we have around this, and the cost of dealing with that, you know, in terms of personnel time, not to mention agita for people like me, but I, I, the experience of when we sent out some, when the town sent out something like this, I don't remember when it was, regarding, you know, regulations for IWWC, it, it made an impact, and we know, at least in the political arena, that mailers are very significant for attention. So I'm just putting in a plug, I know that there's a cost issue here, but we know how effective it is to put mailers out there. People do actually pay attention to them.
I understand, and I think our, the bulk rate we were quoted was somewhere around 47 cents a piece, if it was gonna be a self-mailer.
Forty-seven cents a piece, okay.
So we didn't, and, and that scenario, we were gonna have to keep one panel as a mailing panel, you know, just print addresses. And then Mary sent me a link for the post office to have a program, I forget what it's called, and that was like 19 or 20 cents a household, so it's another, maybe 2,300 or 2,400, let's just call it, but again, we're scraping the budget on what we can afford.
Right.
So I think, what we'd like to do is, if we can sneak it in the tax bill rate, if not, we're gonna blanket social media, we're going to have it on the front page of the town website, we're gonna talk to the Trumbull Times and make sure people know to look for it, you know, what else, what else can you do?
Right, right, yep.
And this really doesn't talk about, this doesn't talk about what homeowners should do, this is really about what we're doing.
Right, right.
Um, but on the website that we're building, I think we should have what homeowners should do.
Right.
Or should not do, you know, just talk about the ordinances and what to think about before they cut down a tree.
Right, yep. Yeah.
And put it, put it on the electric sign at Town Hall, Thousand Trees for Trumbull.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Questions or comments?
Yeah, what were you, how many did you say you wanted to print initially?
We don't know yet, we have to think about that, and it depends also. You know, I think if we do 500, you know, right away, and then go back for another thousand if we need it, or if we are gonna mail it until the tax bills will obviously need more than 12,000, so we just have to decide.
Let's, uh, looks really good.
Oh, the brochure is beautiful.
Thanks.
It's absolutely beautiful, and.
I, I did it, I did it myself, I'm not a designer, but I like the way it came out.
Yeah.
It's, it's absolutely beautiful, and, you know, I understand what Janet's saying, what Pam's saying in terms of mailing, but I would love to see a mailing go out to describe this committee, because I don't think many, many people know that this exists, and how you can find us. I only found out about you folks from the Wilton Go Green Committee. So, anyway, that's just my two cents on.
It's very new, you know, it's very new, nobody knows, because we haven't announced it really, just it was a piece in the Trumbull Times last fall, after Mel won her Aquarian Award.
No, no, I mean about the, the whole sustainable Trumbull. I didn't even know that we had a, an environmental committee in Trumbull until I learned about it from my friends in Wilton. So, that's one of my primary goals, you know, to assist in, you know, having that information get out to all of our citizens that we're here, and there are wonderful resources, but if they don't even know who we are and how to find us. So, anyway, I'll step back.
April, you're, you said you had to go soon, so you, you indicated that you're working on the the tree program, tree education program for fifth graders, and that it's been approved for, at all the elementary schools, is that right?
Yeah, so we got approval from the Science Department Chair and the Assistant Curriculum Director, Dr. Iwaniki, so it's a go for all six elementary schools. Barlet Tree Company is a go for, I think, 700 students. Sustainable Youth is a go with Ryan Romeo, who is willing to share his presentation and edge, and like, get everybody on par, so we're giving the same information across all the schools. So I'm trying to get, I'm waiting on a couple of dates to make sure the dates work when the trees are here, and then I'm gonna need probably at least one other adult, maybe two. If you guys are free throughout the day, I'm gonna take a day, personal day. And really, our job is gonna be just really to bag the trees, to make sure they end up in like the cute little barlet things, the kids are gonna do all the presentations, and we're just gonna make sure everything kind of just runs smoothly as an adult there, just to kind of assist. So the teachers just kind of, kind of watch, kind of observe what the kids do while they're talking, but it should be a really nice day for all the fifth graders across town.
So who's doing the presentation, the?
Ryan Romeo, Fairfield, and the Sustainable Youth Team.
So I'm sorry, what was his name, Ryan?
Romeo from Fairfield.
Ryan Romeo. From Fairfield.
Of the Sustainable Youth Team.
And that's the Fairfield Sustainable Youth Team?
Our Sustainable Youth.
Oh, of TSY?
Yes.
From Fairfield and TSY, right? Right, is Ryan Romeo like leading that whole thing?
Ryan.
Showing, showing TSY how to do it, or how's that, how's that plan?
He created that, yeah, because we're using his presentation again from last year, that was created along with Mary Hope, so we're gonna just find it, maybe tweak it a little bit, and then make sure everyone's able to present the same information, so it does consist across all six schools.
Do you know the rough timing of it, April?
In April.
April and April, thank you. No, I just tried to figure out with, with Thousand Trees and Arbor Day, if it'll be close.
It's really depending on when we have testing going on in the buildings, and when we could get in, what's available, and the trees are here, so, you know, we're throwing dates here and there.
Nice work on this, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, April, let me know how many students you need, if, or if you're gonna reach out to them directly from the Google Classroom, or if you want me to try to corral some, let me know.
Yeah, the kids are in school, right?
Yep.
The Sustainable Youth is in school, so how do they do that? How are they gonna?
We'll worry about that, Kevin, don't worry.
Okay.
We're good.
All right, very good, so. Sounds good, was there something else you had on, you wanted to report on, April?
Uh.
Before I let you go?
No, I work with Mari on almost everything, so whatever she agreed to.
All right, good, 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 good. All right, so before you go, though, we need to approve the minutes from February 21st meeting, anybody wanna move on that?
Sure, I'll move to approve the meetings.
Okay, anyone want a second, April 2nd?
Yep, I'll second.
All right, all in favor? All right. Good. Uh, April. Good, 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 all right, so, thank you very much. Let's see, that I have on my agenda here, waste reduction, under Waste Reduction, we have Earth Day activities, including tidy up Trumbull with Trumbull Community Women. Who wants to report anything particularly we're doing as sustainable, as sustainable Trumbull?
We asked for the Park and Ride on Park Street, and they gave it to us, so that's the official Sustainable Trumbull post. And it's gonna need all of us, probably, because I drove by it the other day, I cleaned up Park Street itself last week, and I had 10 pounds of garbage. It's, I don't know.
That is a never-ending
gross.
battle, right?
So that's, that's the only thing that I have planned around Earth Day for the, for the team myself, I don't know if anyone else has anything else to add.
Yeah, I've got my own, I've got some at Nature Center and Unity Park, but that's on my own, sort of, I guess.
Were we gonna try to do, excuse me, recycling with Cheryl Baldwin, or anyone to try to pop something in for that week?
Yeah, I've got that, I've got that as the next item on my.
Oh, sorry, I didn't.
Agenda, sorry, I just sent it out, that's why you didn't look at it. I've got, under recycling, I've got flyers, ABCs and the double-sided, Mari, you wanna speak to that, where we're at?
Um, sure. Um, the ABC list, it was just one that we kind of dropped off the face of the earth a couple of years ago during COVID. We had worked on, and so there's obviously been some updates. I should have opened it to try to share the screen on it, but basically, it's just an alphabetized list of almost anything we could think of, and what the proper disposal process is for those items. We added all the items that we take at the recycling drive, that, that was kind of the biggest change to the list. So we just thought it would be a good addition to the website as a printable list or resource. Fairfield has one that we kind of modeled after. So we're hoping to wrap that up, we can circulate it to anybody interested in taking a glance at it, to see if there's anything we missed, but.
Is that gonna be the one that, that you can link to from, like, other places on the town website, like the transfer station, or, or part, or Public Works, or anybody, is it gonna be multiple places people can click on it, or how do you, how, how would people?
You want me to show it? I can show it.
Sure, Pam, yeah. I mean, I think that's, that has, those are like details we haven't really worked out exactly there on the website. There's probably a couple of places, it could be strategically placed.
It's a really great, it's a really great flyer to have.
Well, we have a couple ones, I think the problem is, like, the state puts out the Recycle CT Wizard, and then it's, you know, that doesn't really address all of the town-specific items, which, you know, this list covers everything. And then, you know, we have to maybe talk about some additional ways to get the double-sided colored flyer as well, to be more printable, visible, clickable, whatever means people want to address it. I think we just need to keep on the social media aspect, people seem to be increasing, increasingly following us and interacting with us on social media, I will say.
Yeah.
I don't know if everybody agrees, but I see more and more comments asking, I thought I saw, you know, a way to recycle this or that. So.
So this is what the flyer looks like, the ABCs looks like, alphabetical. I never heard back from the fire department, so I'll try them again, about fire extinguishers.
That thing's.
And I will call the transfer station about the fluorescent tubes, but there's, this is what it looks like. And I, I don't know, I must have missed it a couple of years ago, I just happened to discover it on Fairfield's website, and sent it to Mari, and said, this is so great, and then this. Mari was good enough to. Mari was good enough to share it with me. So that's what it looks like where it is right now.
Yeah, thanks for jazzing it up. Again, I think like the, it would be nice if there was like a interactive thing where you click on, um, you know, type in a word and it pops up what to do with it. But the, the recycle wizard for the state doesn't really address all our town-specific things. So I think this is a, a good addition to the resources, but.
Yeah, it's, you know what? It's never gonna be perfect.
Right.
And I think this is really good.
Yeah, I think it looks good. Thanks for your editing skills, Pam, that I dumped on you, but.
So what's the status of that one? The ABC's flyer?
I think we just have to give it one last look and then um, identify where we think it would be um, best utilized on the website and ask for it to be uh, a, a link to be added there, right? Pam?
And we can put on our social media, there's a lot of ways to identify what, what goes in the bin and what doesn't. Here's another thing that we're making available to you. It's alphabetical.
And yeah.
You know, have, just make it another LinkedIn to look for.
Yep.
I always have good intentions of adding uh, more posts to the uh, social media on recycling drive because we have a few key offenders that we um, we see all the time. The wrong type of plastic coming in. Um, you know, like the paper coated bubble mailers. Those are just trash. The all-plastic ones we take, the all-paper ones now that are um, nicely showing up go in single stream. So that's like a post I'm hoping to put out um, just as an example.
And then what's the double-sided flyer? Remind me of um.
That was the nice colored one that we did of, um, it took the updated state flyer on what's accepted and in um, the single stream recycling. Because there's been some changes such as the no black um, plastic containers in the curb side. It's a reminder of the no plastic bags. Not to bag your recyclables, rather, no tanglers, nothing smaller than two inches. That was the front side and then the backside was all our town-specific recycling options. So it talks about our textile recycling, the recycling drive, um, the glass pilot recycling, um, help me out guys, electronic recycling at the transfer station, which Pam, I saw a whole box of fluorescent um, light bulbs. Is that what you're talking about on that, the ABC list?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there is a whole box of them in the electronic trailer there in the back of the other light bulbs. So I'm assuming they are collected.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. They are. Sometimes I think somebody said they went there and there weren't any and they were wondering why, but yeah, that's, that's where they're supposed to go. There's.
So I was with the long tubes, you know, the, the tubes that are in like, in a basement.
Those are the CFLs. Yeah, the CFLs and the tubes, it's all, it's all the same. It's all mercury.
It is, okay.
Based uh.
So Mari, is this the one, the double-sided one you're talking about?
Yes, yes. I guess we should call it the Wish Cycle. Yeah. I, I see people responding. Um, I, and again, maybe it's no one in our group. Maybe it's people on Facebook commenting that like double A regular alkaline batteries are trash. That's like one of the main things they collect in the electronic trailer. So.
I think, I think I, I answered that on our um, sustainable email because it, I was confused. But if it goes in the trash and gets hauled, what's the difference between it getting hauled by the electronics trailer? Because it's still, it's an alkaline battery. So I'm not sure if it matters.
Yeah, it's a fair question. I'm not sure what they do.
It's at the trailer, no?
No, no.
That's what I would think, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure what they do with the um, with the batteries because there's so many different batteries. There, there's nickel cadmium, which are toxic. Um, and then the alkalines are non-toxic, but they say they accept them anyway. So I can't remember what, I'm not sure I even ever knew what they did with the alkaline ones. If they take, when they take them back, what do they do with them? I, I assume that they're doing something with them to recycle them and get some valuable material out of them. Otherwise, why would they take them?
Yeah, that's what I'm confused by.
What'd you say, Pam?
That's what I'm confused by. Maybe, I think you had a contact at the, the uh, electronics recycler himself, right?
Yes, new tech, I think it is. Yeah, I could reach out to him and get a little more clarity and I was confused, Pam, I guess. I thought, assumed that if it's being collected there, it's being recycled. So.
Yeah, I don't know. Cause it's kind of.
We can get more clarity on that. Yeah.
Yeah, there is a thing here.
And then about your question, Mary, about a recycling event, I just feel like um, there's a lot of things going on um, that week in April. Um, I just didn't know if we wanted to try to add a recycling event. Nobody really talked much about it and we're kind of getting close to the date. But um, I think it might be uh, last minute to get Cheryl, but we could, we can certainly try. Are we looking to do a Zoom or an in-person event? I mean.
Yeah, I know it was talked about the last meeting and that's why I just wasn't sure if anything had happened or two meetings ago. Um, but uh, it was, should we do in person? Then Cheryl doesn't really do in person, so should be Zoom and then, you know, so I wasn't sure if anything had been planned or not. But it is like, it just seems like, you know, everybody I know is saying, how do I dispose of this still? It's like the more information you give people, the more confused they are because now they're actually trying to look at, you know, instead of just, you know, even Marty's finally now going, oh, is this in the trash? So, but hey, if it isn't, you know, even if we should tell people, here's a link that, you know, Sustainable Fairfield's having, you know, something or Westport, West, you know, wherever. You know, that's fine. I just think there's a lot of people looking.
I agree. It's kind of late for Earth Week and I don't know that we necessarily have to do it around Earth Week. And just speaking selfishly, I am tied up. I'm just completely in the weeds. But um, maybe we could think about later on in the spring doing that. And there was one other, it was one other online event I was thinking about, which just looked pretty great. But also I'm gonna be hoping to get tables at the farmer's market again this year. That opens in May.
Yeah, I was just thinking that. I wonder if we could do a presentation at one of the farmer's markets. If they would let us like, say, one of the Thursdays at from four to five or from five to six, we were doing a recycling thing on a week that we had the table. It's already there and you already have people coming on foot. It might be a nice opportunity that it would attract maybe a, a few additional people to come to the farmer's market anyway. But maybe we can put that as an option, as a venue.
Let's think about what that would be.
Yeah. I would be willing to.
It's four to seven people tend to come in.
But I'm gonna agree with uh, you. I, I just don't have the bandwidth to plan something in the next two weeks or so. It's just a little too hurried for me.
Mari, I saw that, um, I know when I was, I'm sorry, Kevin, that just about events. Fairfield is doing a recycle mattress event and they, they put it on their Sustainable Fairfield website and I shared it because any town, anybody in any town can bring their mattress. But I wondered about, since we're not gonna offer that at our transfer station, maybe that would be something to do here where we can find a spot to do a partnership of buy-by-mattress for a mattress recycling day. Later on in the year.
We're, we're. Go ahead.
I said they have offered that to us in the past. I'd sent that to George um, at a time when he was, you know, the beginning of the reconfiguration of the transfer station. So I'm sure he was uh, you know, overwhelmed with a lot of things coming in at the same time because they were trying to get it back in. And we know that he really wasn't interested in having that, but they, they did all, also offer that. I don't know, maybe even on a hazardous waste day, um, since people are going there. You know, I think he was just curious. Yeah, I'd like to see how many mattresses. I know I'd send a Fairfield and Westport and one other town their last ones. But I think if, if, if he hears how many mattresses other towns are getting in to say, yeah, it's definitely is, you know, something that like, do people really keep their mattresses? Um, you know, or do they get them hauled when they're uh, you know, when they're, when they're getting new beds? But if you're just getting rid of beds, like your kid beds, when they move out and leave you, um, you know, then you've got mattresses nobody wants. So.
Well, I could ask Mary. They've done it before, I think. Mary Hope?
Yeah, no, no, I'd sent him the last time they did it in Westports. So, but it'd be interesting to see even if, like, because sometimes we are like, are people interested in, would people like to see composting at the transfer station? You know, if, do people hang on to their mattresses? Do they have, you know, certain things that we talk about and we're always curious what the, um, you know, what the thought is of the residents? So maybe that's one of those like, do people have them? I mean, if Fairfield has that option, they could go already, but it's obviously conveniences, conveniences everything.
Um, Mari, just getting back on that Wish Cycle um, flyer, what's, what's the status of that then?
Muted.
Now, am I muted?
No.
No, I'm not.
Sorry. Talking to myself, guys.
I do that.
I think we were waiting to hear back from George. I, the timing of the email was like a Friday. Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, where we were asking him for ideas of how to distribute it, maybe via haulers and/or other avenues throughout town. And he was gonna get back to us with some ideas. So we could circle back, maybe.
Yeah, there was also then we had heard about the contamination from hoses and things like that. Like there was a, a big amount of contamination. So we'd asked him also if he could weigh in and should we highlight something a little more or just put that in the context of like an email when it's being blasted out as a little blurb? So um, I guess Mari, did you wanna follow up or Cindy or me or any whoever?
Maybe both.
All right, sounds good.
I mean, one, one quick email from the town on it in November doesn't really like solidify the information. Unfortunately, I think just like anything, if, if you see it a few times, uh, maybe add an additional bullet point that you're highlighting, like you said, Mary, I think would help.
So are you asking for something specific to be done? I'm sorry, we have things going on in the office. It's hard to follow two, two or three things at once.
We were just talking about um, avenues to further distribute the um, uh, town-specific recycling flyer we put together. George was gonna get back to us, so we thought we could. Um, I can follow up directly with him, but if you have any other ideas or uh, wanna follow up as well, the more exposure it gets, I think the more residents will um, understand the guidelines.
What about just putting uh, posting on the town website? It would go out to subscribers, which is better than, I mean, it doesn't go out to everybody, but it's better than nothing. So you know, another way to get it to people.
Yeah, once George is cool with the way it's worded and there's everything's got a nod, I think that would be great.
Mm-hmm. Sounds good.
I think he approved it, Pam, a while ago. It was just more the um, he was gonna get back to some ideas, maybe, but yeah, but the ABC one, we, we will need his approval on, I think, to share, so.
All right. Next on the agenda I have is food scrap initiative, and I think that was part of the discussion in the budget hearings perhaps. Um, who wants to handle, talk about that first?
Mary, did you get to, I, I was listening to the recording of the budget meeting and just when they were getting to the transfer station is when we popped up here at four o'clock. So what, did anything happen today vis-à-vis food scraps?
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's, I was gonna say, it's like we did that so much earlier, but I forgot if you're watching the recording. Um, yeah, it did get brought up. There were a couple of people on the Board of Finance that were interested in it and said that, you know, it had kind of been discussed for years. George did talk about the um, his visit to Fairfield and the issue of having to have some kind of a, a, you know, holding area for them so that bins aren't blowing over. Um, his, you know, his, his concern of, yeah, just getting the education on it for not being able to just come and dump your stuff in the compostable bags. So he kind of did a kind of a run-through for the, um, for the Board of Finance and he did bring up, uh, you know, again, he really needs to get the reconfiguration done first, just because of the ability for the trucks to turn the in and out with the cars and things like that. There's just too much up there at this point, but it definitely seems like, um, you know, even, even the Board of Finance members are on board for it. So uh, you know, hopefully that'll, I don't know, I didn't ask him what date, if, if that, you know, when that is pending, when that'll be done. But you know, we're still in the holding and there, he's not, uh, you know, there's also a thought of not doing it at a, um, like say at the farmer's market or something like that where you don't have oversight uh, as to what's being put in and when and things like that. So.
Yeah, I think that, I think the transfer station is the ideal, at least.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's still, but it, but it was, it was nice to see people that uh, are not on our group bringing it up. So, you know, we'll still keep gathering.
Well, it's been all over the news. Uh, if you, if you read any newspaper or blogs or the state of Connecticut, there's, there's talk about food scrap initiatives everywhere. So.
Yeah.
It's becoming fashionable.
Well, that's why, yeah, that's why the, the um, state was doing, you know, so many of those pilot programs to see what the participation was. But I think the easiest thing is gonna be if the, if the trash haulers take it themselves, um, you know, like they already have the two trucks that come by. If they had the third truck kind of a thing and people don't have to bring it to the transfer station, but that's back to like Nick's carting, then you're paying an extra. So it, you know, it comes down to all that. And again, pay as you throw, that seems to be the way to go if you're gonna put both of those things together. But I mean, for a lot of towns, it looks like it may just be once it gets mandated, you know, but it would be nice to get out before that happens. So.
Sounds good. And there's really not a clear indication when the transfer station reconfiguration is gonna be done, right? Any clue on that yet?
Yeah, not, not that I know. It seems like, as I said a couple of years ago, that it was being held up through MetroCock and um, it's, you know, it's just unfortunately, every, everything is a process. Uh, you know, when you're talking about something, something like that and the weight master getting done and there, so there's a lot of different moving parts up there. But I, I'm, I'm hopeful soon.
All right. Thanks for that. Um, next I have on the agenda is the refill not landfill campaign. Who wants to handle that? Is you?
Mari, is that you? It bothers Cindy because I know she was on that meeting all day. Um, Cindy, I sent you a message last week to see if you ever heard back from Rena on that?
I did not.
Okay, so we should.
We're still waiting, waiting reply from Rena.
I guess so.
All right. And I also added here, um, did we hear back on how the food advocacy legislation went? The one that uh, I think we sent as a group, a comments on that? Did, did anything happen with that? Does anybody know?
I think it's getting voted on, on Wednesday is the next Environmental Committee meeting. Let me pull up my email real quick.
So it's in committee right now?
Most of the ones we sent in advocacy form are still up for vote, I think. So what they do is, I mean, most of you probably already know this. I'm still learning. Um, a miracle, I'm the spokesperson for the group on this. But um, it seems that they um, have open comment and then they vote on it, right? And then it goes on to the different, um, but it looks like. But yeah, I think it's Wednesday. Let me just see, agenda posted. Um, anybody remember the bill name?
It was SB 785, but I think it got, I don't know if it got changed around after that or not.
I'm sorry, this is the um, Environmental Committee though, the agenda for Wednesday I'm looking at. So that, that's gonna be in the other committee. It's the um, shoot, what was the name of that committee? I forget.
But it's, you, you think it's still, we're, we're awaiting a vote in committee in the Environmental Committee?
Yeah.
Get it out of committee? Okay.
Yeah, but it's not Environmental Committee. It was one, remember there was a couple that we, one was in the Education Committee, the one on compost, composting at schools. Then there was another bill that, that this one, the food advocacy was in a different committee. Um, I don't remember it. I'm sorry.
This was this one Reggie was speaking about?
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Right, that's fine. And I didn't expect, you know, anything to happen quickly there. So then it hasn't. Uh, all right. The next item I have on the agenda is no mo may. Uh, we had a contender last time. Let's see if he's still here. Um, we had Frank Williams was, I guess, sitting in on our meeting last time around. And he was, uh, I guess he told, I talked to him and I think maybe somebody else talked to him too?
No.
Mel talked to him? Yeah, that's right, because I saw.
We talked to him or exchanged emails with him.
Yeah, she was having emails with him too. So um, yeah, I guess he, he participated in his lawn. He told me that he did a no mo man. He was amazed at how some huge things grew up in the yard and all these creatures, you know, butterflies and insects and everybody were coming by and he thought it was the greatest thing in the world. And um, I was wondering if we can do more on it this year, advertise it. He said, oh, maybe if the first select woman can do it in her yard and make a big deal out of it. And I was like, yeah, well, that, that'd be great, but I'm not sure that's gonna happen. Uh, but.
This is really a um, a thing for Mel because she's so involved with the pollinator pathway. And what she said in her email back to him was that there, there seems to be, I don't know if controversy is the right word, but there's discussion about whether it's effective, if it's the right thing. Uh, it's a hard pill to swallow for some people to do it. I did it last year and honestly, by like the 25th of May, I had enough because it was just.
Oh, yeah, I tried to, I thought I would try to do it, but then, you know, everything got kind of out of control by the middle of May or so and I.
So I think, I think Mel really should speak to that, maybe in the, she's not going to make it today, in the next meeting. And I really, I'm gonna just go on the record as blanket saying I'm against any lawn signs, those wire signs. I'm against any of them being made ready for this. Because all I do is pick them up off the ground and, you know, Rick put them in my own trash.
You, that's right, you're the one who has to collect them and throw them in the garbage, because nobody else will do it.
They're awful. They're a blight.
Alright, that's, that's a good comment. We'll defer to Mel, follow up with Mel on that. Let's see, what do I got? So Thousand Trees for Trumble, we talked about that, talked about tree.
Well, actually, can, can I chime in about no mow May?
Sure.
I had never heard of it before last year. And I didn't have a trumble sign. I made my own signs. And so I put out my own signs so that my neighbors would not think we were just lazy. But I was so inspired by the bees, the butterflies, the birds. And after May ended, you know, we did mow the lawn, but our backyard, we, we let the mow, you know, the lawn grow longer. And since then, we've added, well, we've torn, we've lawned, gotten rid of some of the lawn, but then we added wild seeds and wildflowers and, oh my gosh, it's so beautiful. And so I just want to be one of the people that says, I think this is a wonderful, you know, effort to, you know, encourage our, our fellow citizens to, to think about. Because it's, it's just been wonderful for me. And I guess I said, I think now, Mary, I, I sent you, you know, the, the sign that I used, I didn't know what sign had been used in the past, but yeah, so that's a big thing for me. I love bees, love birds, love butterflies. And that's it for me.
Alright, thank you. Next item I have on my agenda is the ECDC Economic Community Development Commission. Ralph couldn't make it, but he did indicate that the, at the March meeting, that they briefly reviewed, says the potential to include some sustainable trumble publicity in future newsletters, no firm schedule for the next newsletter at this point, keep you posted. As the newsletter is targeted to the business community, I suggest we separately talk about how the good works of sustainable trumble can be more broadly publicized directly with residents. I'd be happy to help with this. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on anything we might want to focus with residents versus businesses. I guess the ECDC, I mean, it's community, economic and community. So I'm not sure how, how they split their time or their efforts in terms of towards the business community versus the community in general. But anybody have any thoughts on that?
That was just the one, the one newsletter, if you go online for that commission and it stopped right around COVID. So there, it, it's, you know, it's, it's new businesses coming to trumble or changes, ribbon cuttings, large things like corporate as well as small things like Mariana's pantry. So it's kind of all over the place, but the, the wait was really to see when that newsletter was going to start coming out again. If it was going to be monthly, quarterly, you know, when it would come out. And then Rena had said that she was fine with putting, you know, anything in from us, whether blurb about what's what the Sustainable Group does and, you know, anything we would like to add. But I don't know when it didn't, it wasn't stated when they were going to get started.
Apparently, they don't, they don't really know yet because he says, no firm schedule for the next newsletter at this point. So, but yeah, I was, we, we had been talking about stuff like the refill not landfill campaign, maybe some things that were focused more on the business end of things. I guess, right?
Maybe what we should do is.
Cutlery and stuff like that? I don't know.
Maybe what we should do is come up with a list of five priorities. I don't know if that's the right number that we would mention to them. Just come up with a list of the things that we would want to go out and when. So that when they're ready to go ahead and do that newsletter, we have things to talk about. What do you think, Mari?
Sure. I mean, I don't know if, if we focus more on the business end of things or how much they just deal with community. I don't know how the community development works into that, but I always understood them to be more of working with the business community a little more than the general community, right?
Things like, it's things like the, the lights that are going up, sidewalks going in, rant things. So it's, it's, so basically Rena does both sides of that. So the commission, you know, they, they weigh in, weigh in on all of that, but it, it's, you know, it just really depends on her and what's going on. And that's what she was trying to get out in the, it was, it's a great newsletter, you know, I'm hoping they do get back to it and it, there would be a good spot, you know, I know we are kind of waiting on things. We would like to skip the cutlery and all that. That would be great to put out there and get started, but you know, we're still not kind of holding pattern.
Yeah, I mean, we could do, there's lots of ways we can direct our efforts. We cut, cut the cutlery is certainly something that's restaurant specific or food service specific. But we could even talk about pollinator pathway and that a retailer could just put out a container in front of their store and be on it. Like, so there's ways to direct the things that we're doing. We're focusing on towards the business community too. So maybe we, we can have like a scrum another day, just for email, whatever, to talk about our priorities and how we'd want it illustrated to the community.
Alright, so let's think about that for maybe next time around. We'll come up with a list in case they actually come up, want to circulate that newsletter again anytime soon. And then the last thing I have on the agenda under goals for 2023, I see, I don't know how long it's been around, but apparently gold certification is a thing now. Yeah, so it's, I forget how many points it is. It's a lot of points and it would take a lot of work. Certainly nothing we would get done this year. But I, I just wanted to see what people thought about going in for that possibly next year. Some of the things, keep in mind that some of the points that we've, that we have or had acquired, some of that stuff expired. So we have to, we can't just add to our point, collect point total that we had from before, because some of those points are expired. So I, I think it was 600 points. I forget how many it's going to be to get gold, but it's quite a bit of work. So has anyone looked at that yet? Has anyone taken?
They haven't. But it would be good to maybe that, going back to that document we were using for certification, to go back to that to see what's expiring and what we'd have to re-up on and how much work it would really take.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's new initiatives that have been added that.
There certainly have, yeah.
There's probably some low hanging fruit there that, maybe.
Yeah, I would think there's still some stuff we'd have to either just renew or get documentation for, but there's probably a lot of stuff we'd have to actually get out and, well, again, it's the town, right? The town is getting certified. We're just assessing.
But maybe there's a tree replacement thing.
Right, right.
We're working on already and that's 40 points. So I don't know. I'll look at, I just pulled it up on my phone and have a look at it.
Alright, yeah, it's gonna be hard to look, follow all that stuff on your phone, but
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's a major list of requirements there. So I haven't looked at it in any kind of detail. I just kind of skimmed it real quick and saw that it was a lot of points.
Maybe someone at a sustainable CT can tell us how many of our points are expiring and where.
Yeah, that's true. They have those MetroCog. I don't think we used the, last year, I think we had a intern or somebody available to us and we didn't really use them at all. But I think that was one of the things they did. Actually, they said if you wanted to get whatever, silver again or whatever, you could. They had, they had gone through what we had done and how many points we had. So presumably that might be something a Metro, MetroCog could help us with. That's it. I don't have anything else necessarily on my, on that list. The other thing, again, I mean, ideally what we would have, I think in these meetings, it's taken about an hour, but you know, we've got the working groups, I guess we're calling them at this point, split up and got a few people volunteered to help, but if they, if you guys, I don't know how you want to handle it, but having like a, a short report prior to the meeting and then just a written report, if that's possible, that would make the meeting go quicker and we'd, we'd be more informed ahead of time. So, but I think it would require more people to be involved in those working groups to really make that happen. So.
Agree.
I just want to say one thing I had sent around, just because I found it, I found it very interesting. One of those good things was that the, when you looked at the waste generated from the town, that from 2017 till current, and it's always in the, the 17,000 ton range. And this was the first time it was at 15,993 for last year, and it looks like it's tracking the same. We have to get to see when that timeframe was that Georgia had put it from. But it looks like it's tracking the same. So that's, that's pretty significant. And I think it's part of it. He said there's 20 to 30 tons of glass that, that was collected. And we haven't really been pushing that that much lately. Summer parties and cooking, we'll have to get back to people, but, but I mean, that's, that's a lot and they don't have a end of pilot date yet for that. So we're still not paying to transport that glass at all. So.
How much glass did you say that was?
Excuse me?
How much glass did you say they had collected so far?
Um, 30 tons.
30 tons, that's pretty good.
20 to 20 to 30. So, and we started later than the other towns because we were waiting for our containers. So, I mean, between that and then like all the plastic wrap that, that, you know, gets collected at the recycle drives and people know, you know, Bay State and help seeing things that are, you know, so this, this group has really done a lot on, on education and pushing. So just, you know, it's, it's, it's showing because I said that's from 2017 on. And so that was surprising to see it. It's not a, you know, it's not a huge thing, but it's pretty, it's pretty big. So.
Not to, I mean, I don't think this has much impact yet, but the new deposit rules around juice containers and things. Like all pineapple juice containers I've been using, the glass ones don't go in recycle anymore and they don't go to the glass container. They go to deposits. So it's just being redirected in a different way.
Yeah, when does that kick in? When does the 10 cents kick in?
10 cents is what, next 23, next year?
Yeah, I thought, yeah, that was my, maybe January 24? Maybe I might be making that up. Not sure.
So they're still not taking, because some of the things, like what is it, juice containers and so forth that are going to be added to that list too?
It's added now at five cents.
So there are five cents, but it doesn't have, it doesn't say CT on it, right? It doesn't say on the.
But there's, there's.
But they do take it?
It was a grace period. So if you buy something at the market that doesn't have it on it yet, you can still give it to the recycling drive and they'll take.
But would, but will, will you get your five cents at the, will it be redeemed? Okay, just it's not marked. Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, because there's, they had to catch up, the manufacturers had to catch up to what was already on the shelves and.
Alright, that's good. Alright. Alright. But there's Mary Ellen, hey, just about, almost done, but here's Mel. Mel, you're muted.
Alright, there you go. Hello.
Alright, we talked about your, we bandied you or your name about quite a bit there earlier. What did we say? What were we talking about with, with Mel about? Something on the?
For sure.
Oh, yeah, the brochure for the Thousand Trees, right? One thing, no mow May was another one.
Frozen cons, people are wondering, yeah.
Frozen cons of no mow May.
Um, is this all that's on today? Because there was a gentleman. I don't know if you saw those.
Frank Williams, yeah, I saw your email to him. I talked to him too. He's a nice guy.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, so what's, what is he passionate about? What does he want to do?
Oh, he thought it's the greatest thing. Marie also thinks it's great because she did it. And, you know, you get all the, you get all the pollinators coming to your house once you start not mowing stuff. So, you know, how to make it more of a, a big deal in town, you know? How to play it up, I guess, is basically what he was talking about. So.
Okay.
I don't know what your thoughts are, but.
Yeah. So I mean, I did it last year and my lawn literally turned into like a meadow of waving grass. It was kind of pretty. I liked it. My dog liked it too. I found really mostly fire, dragonflies in there. Because it was so high that there was like nothing flowering. So it seems like the Xerces Society had this this webinar last week, which I didn't get a chance to watch. It was a recording and I sent it to that gentleman and suggested that he watch it because they're making other recommendations instead of like no mow, maybe it just should be low mow or you know, keep it.
Medium mow.
Medium mow, because it's better for the grass and it's also better for the pollinators. Because if it gets really high, then you're shading out all the flowering stuff.
Yeah, okay.
Not as great for the pollinators as they thought.
Gotcha.
I think, sounds like there's a happy medium in there somewhere in terms of mowing.
You need a lawnmower that's got like wheels that big so it can cut a foot high across your lawn and then you're good to go.
Set it up to four, five inches or something like that. Um, might be better, but yeah, I haven't had a chance to watch that, that webinar from Xerces on low mow or no mow, but I think that would be, you know, I would follow what they would advise. What Xerces would advise us, you know, people to do. You know, we're all learning and making attempts and sometimes it doesn't work and sometimes it breaks your lawnmower and then people get picked out because the lawnmower gets all jammed up. So there might be a better way to do it. So, you know, that's all I would say.
Okay, that's good.
Next month, we can maybe come out with the right way to do it in April, something.
Was there anything else we had talked about, kicked around? Obviously the.
I showed the brochure, Mel.
Yeah.
That's great. Pam did a great job on that.
I think.
Yeah, look, look good.
I keep disconnecting there, okay. Anything else? Mary is in the midst of budget season.
Mm-hmm.
Which is always fun.
Yeah, I think it was about all weekend.
There's one thing quickly, Mel, for the Thousand Trees, do you, did you get a plant date from, or plant week from Dimitri? Is there going to be a, we just went down the other day to see how much still was left at Twin Brooks, you know, it's still that whole back half. So it's not going to be a, a whole ribbon cutting, obviously, but once the trees are planted, if you're still planning on doing anything to, like, you know, food truck and, you know, I don't know. Anything interesting down there, some pollinator information and things like that, once it's, once they're all in?
So we, let's see, so Pam and I and Dimitri and Tim Coughlin. Right, weren't we just on a, a call and we talked to Dimitri about this? And because so much is going on at Twin Brooks that is still under construction, I'd rather wait until later in the year to do some kind of an event there, because we think if we get approval for more money, we can maybe do a fall planting of trees too. So then we could have, there would be a lot more trees there. It will give us time to do signage. Um, and then it'll give them time to get maybe that pollinator garden in as well. Up at the Veterans Memorial.
Yeah, I figured the Arbor Day was kind of pushing timing and, and it's, and it looks pretty bad down there. So, you know, until the rest of that area gets cleaned up more. So, you know, you want it to look as good as it can. So that's great.
So we're just.
Close though, it's close at Twin Brooks. I was there over the weekend. It's, it's really come a long way.
Yeah, I don't know.
Weather, hopefully weather will stay with us so they can keep moving.
Yeah, they can keep getting them, getting them trees in there. So, yeah, so we're going to push back any kind of celebration until the fall. Maybe October, September, October, something, maybe September. If we can get more trees in there. So that was it. If we can get more trees in there. So that was it.
All right. All right. Does anybody else have any questions, comments before we go? All right then. Uh, thank you everyone for.
Thank you.
I got, so does this count for participation even though I came late?
Yeah, sure. You'll get, you got, we'll send you, we'll send you a sticker in the mail. Gold sticker.
Gold sticker. As we say at my house, like, does it count as mass? Yes, it counts as mass.
All right, everybody. Thank you. Thanks, Bill. Thank you, everybody.